Welcome to our board meeting. We're glad to have a room full of folks here with us tonight. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance, which I think is going to be led by some students who are here to be honored in a few minutes, right, Ms. Michael?
Right.
So those of you who are going to do it will step forward and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now if you'll please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. On the agenda, Jeff needs to be back at the commission tonight at 5:30. So if you anticipate having questions about the budget amendments, we'll need to move that up. If not, we'll leave it where it is and do some of our other things first. So does anybody anticipate having questions about the budget amendments that Jeff will need to address? If not, then I suggest we approve the agenda, the consent agenda. Then we have Colonel Houchen's give his presentation, which I think will be relatively brief. Then we have the recognition of the Duke students, and then we have Dr. Nixon, and then we'll go through the rest of our agenda. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if somebody will move to approve with those changes?
I move that we approve those changes as stated by the chairman.
So, second.
Any discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, motion's adopted. So approval of the consent agenda.
Some move.
Start.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, motion's adopted. So Colonel Houchen's welcome. If you'll step forward. We're glad to hear from him.
This time I'd like for Mr. Harry Gill to come forward and just love the why. Normally when we do something like this, the military can say attention, don't order, and everybody has to come to attention, but since we're not in our environment, Richard, great society.
And her son didn't come, so I can make him stand.
He understand you.
I think he is.
The Department of the Army, Mr. Harry W. Gill is awarded the Outstanding Civilian Service Medal for outstanding achievements while serving as superintendent of Rutherford County Schools, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, from July 2003 to July 2012. Mr. Gill's 40-year period of educational service is marked by a selfless attitude and a willingness to expend his efforts to achieve the very best on behalf of the students and teachers. His exceptional support for the JRTC program has resulted in Rutherford County's programs achieving honor unit with distinction each year from 2003 to 2012. The respect and affection he receives from peers and students manifest his qualities of coaching, edifying, administration, leadership, integrity, and professional knowledge. Mr. Gill's dedication to duty and commitment bring great credit upon himself, Rutherford County Schools, Cadet Command, and the United States Army. Signed, James M. McDonald, Major General, United States Army, Commanding General, Cadet Command. And we have an award from the schools' junior ROTC programs in Rutherford County. Mr. Harry Gill is cited for outstanding leadership and achievement while serving in a position of superintendent at Rutherford County Schools, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, from 2003 to 2012. Mr. Harry Gill's entire 40-year period of educational service is marked by a selfless attitude and willingness to expend his every effort to achieve the very best on behalf of Rutherford County's JRTC programs. His intense dedication to duty, personal sacrifice, and uncompromising standards of conduct have provided the impetus for the growth of the county's ever-expanding JRTC program. Mr. Gill's exceptional support for the JRTC program is most noteworthy and has resulted in Rutherford County's programs achieving honor unit with distinction for each year from 2003 to 2012. The deep respect and sincere affection he receives from all of his peers, students, JRTC cadets, and the JRTC programs manifest Mr. Gill's superlative qualities of coaching, administration, leadership integrity, and professional knowledge. Mr. Gill's dedication to duty and commitment to excellence in education bring great credit upon himself and Rutherford County.
And behind each great man is a greater woman.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. Congratulations, Mr. Gill.
Thank you.
I think we're ready for number nine.
Tonight, we recognize some of our brightest students in Rutherford County. This is always one of the highlights we have as a school board. And it reflects the hard work of not only the students, but the commitment of their parents and also the teachers that teach them and the principals that principal them. So let me say in advance of the recognition, congratulations. Your efforts are obviously paying off, and they will continue to pay off. We encourage you to keep trying, keep plugging away, and you've got bright futures ahead of you. That said, I'd ask Ms. Carol Burning to come forward. Ms. Burning, would you take over?
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Gill, and the board members for this opportunity to recognize these students. These students are being recognized for their performance on either the ACT assessment or the SAT reasoning test as a part of the Duke Talent Identification Program. We had 177th graders to complete one of these two assessments. And of these students, 94 scored at a level which qualifies them for state recognition. And these students have been invited to a recognition ceremony at Vanderbilt University. Seven students scored at a level which qualifies them for grand recognition, and they've been invited to a recognition ceremony at Duke University. So we want to congratulate them and commend these 104 students for their distinction. We're very proud of their accomplishments in the Duke program as well as their accomplishments in the classroom. At this time, I'm going to call the students' names. I have them in alphabetical order. And so if the students will come up as I call their names, and Mr. Burns is going to hand out the certificate as they come up. And I was going to ask Mr. Gill to do this because I was so impressed with his performance at calling the names of the teachers at the retirement banquet. And I thought, you know, he could pronounce these names too. But I thought I'd give them a break tonight.
Thank you.
So I would ask that you all hold your applause. As you can see, there are many people here, and we don't want to be here for two or three hours. So if you would hold your applause until they all receive their certificates. And I would also ask, at the end of the recognition, when all of the certificates have been handed out, if all of the recipients would go into the lobby and Mr. Evans will take a group shot.
I want to say one thing, though, first. Ms. Burning, a lot of you know, tiring after, I don't know, five or six decades in education. Not really. Although she was a teacher of mine. I don't know that she-
Yes.
An old-looking fellow like myself-
And he was a good student. You were a good student.
Just good?
Yes.
That was a little too much honesty. But anyway, thank you, Ms. Burning, for everything that you've done. It's up to that last comment.
So as you get your certificate, if you want to go back to your city, because it might get kind of crowded up here. So we'll do that. All right. So remember, please hold your applause until we're all done. Jacob Apician. Ariel Asher. Inam Alshanawi. Julie Bartsch. Ashley Beckman. Rebecca Brackett. John Brewer. Shaitan Shendre Shakar. Claire Chesney. Alyssa Coley. Krista Colwell. Matthew Connors. Kathryn Kreitz. Keaton Cummins. Essence Dalton. Jacob Dayon. Nathan Delp. Caitlin Donovan. Wesley Duffield. Marion Ferrer. Paige Flanagan. Sky Gallagher. Tyler Gallagani. Lauren Gabby. John Blasner. Alan Gonzalez. Justin Goodhart. Ryan Goodwin. Marissa Graham. Chalena Grimm. Kobe Grubbs. Sophia Hall. Liz Hamby. Emma Harris. Timothy Harrison. Anthony Harvath.
Go ahead. Got a winner.
Samantha Havenstride. Carson Hilton. William Porter. Desiree Hauser. Brayden Jackson. Sydney Jobe. Adam Johnson. Sarah Jones. Caitlin Judkins. Frederick Junker. Victoria Pelosi. Travis Keenum. Kelsey Keane. Sean Kennedy. Rebecca King. Emma Cruz. Harrison Lacy. Elizabeth Lancaster. Luke Leskennen. Emily List. Nicholas- Nicholas Lockyer. Rachel Massaro. William Moss. Calvin McMillan. Carter Nadeau. Lane Nash. Benjamin Nelson. Emma Nelson. Alexander Noriega. Emily Ottman. Allison Osteen. Chase Owens. Gavin Page. Avery Patterson. Zachary P. Robert Peck. Olivia Principato. Tyler Redman. Kayla Reed. Reese Rich. Lucy Ricks. Thomas Roberts. Benjamin Robinson. Caitlin Robinson. Alexis Sealcar. Brianna Sexton. Karma Sharp. Anna Smith. Eric Smith. Laurel Smith. Bailey Sykes. Megan Taylor. Edward Thomason. Karen Trammell. Thomas Trichler. Carl Truby. Michael Boe. Lauren Walker. Christopher Williams. Hannah Wolf. James Wyatt. Carl Cole Yoders. Ethan York. Lauren Zachary. Olivia Zietz. Please join me in- And if the students would join us out in the lobby, Mr. Evans will get a group picture. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Carol. Very nice job. You did too. You hit some hard names. You know, I appreciate what people do though, because so many times they'll say, oh, I hope I didn't mention your name. So, very nice. Of course, I owe you now for your comment. I'll get you back. We didn't have any visitors, did we?
Oh, he's here. It's an empty floor. Little video. That is the PowerPoint. This, uh, this, that's the B-side of the-
Probably still are.
Rock it out there in the same place.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hey Scott, Mark Burns. Good to meet you. Thank you, sir. Nice to see you, Will. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Education is the great equalizer. It's the opportunity to get better.
Every high school graduate in the country should come out of school ready for college or ready for a career. Not just ready-
I got some big as far as the crowd, didn't it, Don?
I do not think so. I think they were all barbecued.
Hey, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Would you shut up and tell us about that place when you go out there?
Okay, let's come back to order. We're pleased tonight to have several visitors from the State Board of Education, including Executive Director Dr. Gary Nixon. Dr. Nixon, you want to make some remarks and introduce your folks?
Thank you. I have with me Mr. Scott Edens, who's recently joined our staff. He's our policy analyst, and Scott was previously with the Department of Education as a math consultant. Has a lot of experience working with Common Core. And I have Dr. David Sevier, as he's my deputy executive director.
Great. Thank you all for coming.
Chairman Burns, Superintendent Gill, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon and spend a little time talking about Common Core. I want to be very brief because I want Scott to have most of our time. But to put it in context, just take us back to about 2006, when we first started looking at why our students were struggling so much in math when they went to college, and about three out of four first-time freshmen were in developmental studies, mostly math. And when we looked at our curriculum and then we started looking at ACT, we found that our curriculum standards were written very much like the questions around a 12 to 13 on the ACT test. Very simple, lot of memorization and recall. So 2007 rolled around, and Tennessee got an F in truth in advertising. The National Chamber told us that we failed in telling kids and parents the truth about how they were doing, because we told them about 90% of the kids were proficient. And when we looked at the progress on Nate, we had about 25 to 30% proficient. At that point, Governor Bredesen got Tennessee involved. We affiliated with Achieve and the American Diploma Project. We upgraded the standards in 2008 to a more rigorous set of standards with new assessments. We upgraded the standards in 2008 to a more rigorous set of standards with new assessments. And then about 2010 rolls along and we have Common Core that unfolds. Uh, we're now two years away from fully implementing Common Core standards. Uh, the next two years will be a phase into them. We'll be taking some of the Diploma Project standards off the table and putting some sample questions on those assessments to field test the PARC type of questions we'll be having in 2014-15. So, but what I wanted to do, if we could get the lights, I brought a clip from ACHIEVE that I think will kind of set the stage. And then Scott Evans is going to do a short presentation and we'll answer your questions.
Education is the great equalizer. It's the opportunity to get better.
Every high school graduate in the country should come out of school ready for college or ready for a career. Not just ready to go, but ready to succeed.
Everybody's come to clearly see the connection between education achievement and economic achievement. We led the world in education for a long time. That's really not so true anymore.
The future of this country's economy is based on innovation, technology, and mathematics.
Every country is trying to figure out how to be competitive.
Our competitors are a lot better than they used to be.
To move forward in this country, we need to meet an ever-increasing standard of excellence.
ACHIEVE has been a major player in terms of educational reform. Higher standards, higher expectation, higher results, higher academic achievement.
Education is the most important aspect we have for competing in the 21st century. It's that simple.
In Nebraska, we try to compete for the national championship every year in football. In order to do that, you have to have high expectations. You have to improve your performance every day. That's what ACHIEVE is trying to do with education. Set higher standards, increase our academic performance, increase the overall standards for every child. Every child deserves a quality education.
If you want to win, you have to choose to compete. ACHIEVE is there to help the United States compete by setting the expectation level at the competitive level with the rest of the world. And that's what ACHIEVE's mission is.
We need to make sure that the skill sets that we can define and measure are reflected in the education that those students get.
It's tougher and tougher each year to find US citizens who have the characteristics to become an Intel employee.
The competition's higher. The world has changed from the 70s, 80s, and even 90s. So, we seek to employ people who can take on significant challenges in the science, technology, engineering, and math arena.
The challenge is bigger, and it's a competitive world. ACHIEVE is committed to the future, and I'm proud to be part of it.
Education is a state-driven effort, so we have to have a state-driven, internationally-benchmarked curriculum. That's what ACHIEVE started off doing. The American Diploma Project was part of that.
Rigorous standards in the classroom are absolutely essential to a more skilled workforce.
The standards define what we think college and career-ready means in a real, practical, day-to-day, and importantly, measurable way.
ACHIEVE can provide the tools for improvement. We can work with the political leaders, the governors.
The beauty of ACHIEVE is that they understand that every state has a different set of circumstances to deal with. That every state is going to take a little different path at a different pace, but they're going to keep the push toward those high standards.
It is absolutely essential that every student in America is prepared for a career or college as they move forward. That's what ACHIEVE is trying to do all across America, and I believe we're making very significant progress.
One of the things that emerged from ACHIEVE was the notion of common standards, that in order to graduate, we'll meet standards in areas as diverse as English and math and now, science.
The Common Core curriculum now is a state-driven, internationally-benchmarked approach.
States are no longer in a local economy. They're in a global one, and it's fierce.
We're not just competing with the county or the state next door. We're literally competing with the entire world.
We're competing against India, Pakistan, China, Singapore.
And we need to have our graduates able to compete in that global economy.
When you think about all the technology that's going to be used, how you're going to be a successful adult, it still comes back to math and science.
Science and math skills are critical.
With the declining enrollment in the science, technology, engineering, mathematics area in the United States in our universities for our own national students, it's tough, tough, tough to find US citizens with the characteristics that we need.
As we look out into the future, that global economy is complicated, competitive, and our students need to be ready to meet it.
And we can't look at education as a local challenge.
Every state now has its own assessment tool. We really need to upgrade those assessment tools to get an internationally-benchmarked assessment tool at the state level. So, we can accurately compare our kids to their international peers, wherever they may be.
The assessment processes are central. We should want to know how we're doing.
People are nervous about being measured. We say, bring it on, because if you don't measure, you don't know where you are.
An honest assessment compares your children's learning with their international counterparts. We find out where our kids perform. Way down in the bottom half. We want our kids to be at the top of that list, not way down in the second tier as they are today.
If everybody's free to set their own standards, it's like grading yourself or doing your own performance review. And it's very easy to decide and convince yourself that you're doing a really, really good job.
You can't fool the rest of the world by giving kids a dumbed-down test and then congratulating yourself on the results. You're being dishonest to the child, dishonest to the parent, dishonest to society.
Having a common standard and a measurement system is extremely powerful. It's how the best businesses operate in order to know they're going to survive into the future. And I think in education, that's something we need to do.
The leadership of ACHIEVE has done a superb job of positioning the organization to play that role of catalyst, to bring leaders together from the business community, the political community.
When you give a young person a great education with our work ethic, then we're going to continue to lead the world. And ACHIEVE's been very vital to our success in moving forward.
Every country wants to grow their economy. They want to have good-paying jobs. They want to move forward. But if you don't start with the foundation, good education, smart people, the game's over. You've lost.
This is a hard job, but it's the right job. And I think the most important thing for our country.
This is the greatest country in the world. It all starts with education.
Turn the lights on or leave them all. Either way. Superintendent Gill, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. Common Core standards are near and dear to my heart. I had the honor to serve as a, as a first-round editor for the drafts of the Common Core standards. And I was a member of the PARC consortium team for the first discussion of the development of the new assessments that are coming in 2014-15. So, tonight, I want to try to give you a little bit of perspective about where we are and where we're headed over particularly the course of the next three years. In particular, how are we going to be preparing our teachers to deliver the Common Core standards, to implement them in the classroom, what work is needed there? And then, uh, the biggest change is in the terms of the assessments, how students are going to be held accountable for, uh, learning and performing on these new assessments. They're going to look very, very different from our previous TCAP assessments. Uh, I gave you a handout. There are a lot of slides in the handout. I'm going to move quickly through some of them. Uh, we'll spend some time on some others. I want you to have access to all the information at your fingertips in your printed handout. To the two most important websites that you probably want to take a look at, um, at home when you have some time to do some research, make a fresh pot of coffee maybe Saturday morning, cook you a nice bagel. Uh, take a look at the tencore.org. That's the dedicated website that the department has put together for all of the implementation strategies, the announcements of all the trainings, everything that is Common Core that's happening in Tennessee is posted on the tencore website. Then the one below, the Common Core State Standards Initiative, that's the national websites where you can actually find the Common Core standards themselves. And you can actually see in fine detail the English Language Arts, reading standards, and the mathematics standards. Uh, you may also be aware that the, the science national standards are in draft right now. They're up for review this year. And final copies of those will probably be available around December of this year. So, they'll be joining the party later this year. Uh, so, you know why we're here. So, here's some data around why we've changed. Uh, Dr. Nixon's already spoke to some of this data before the video. And the video highlighted where our ranking was. So, we know where we've been and what's happened to get us to this point. So, how are we moving forward through the implementation? So, the assessments are in course of, in flux of changing right now. The TCAPS and the EOCs, uh, we're looking with the waiver. We're looking for a 3% to 5% increase in, in the students who are proficient and advanced. Uh, we're, we're looking for growth on NAEP. And this is a very particular point. Uh, our success on our First to the Top Grant is going to be measured in a large part with our performance on the NAEP assessments at fourth and eighth grade, particularly reading and math. So, we want to make sure that we're keeping NAEP in our, in our foresight as we're moving forward. Good instruction is good instruction. So, we expect that to translate. There is a high correlation between Common Core standards and NAEP, but when you get down to the grain-size level, there are some differences. But good instruction on the Common Core standard should help us to make that, that translation. So, we'll be, uh, looking for growth in with our TCAP and our EOCs, 3% to 5%. And then we, we've set a goal with the PARC states. Currently, right now, we're performing around 18th. There are about 24, 26 PARC states. And we're, we're setting a goal to be in the top half of that, to be 12th. Uh, so, the focus today is, is on, on why we're teaching, what we're teaching, and how we're teaching it. So, I'm going to spend some time with you on the, on the what we teach with the Common Core standards to help you get an understanding of what's actually going to be happening in those classrooms. And then, uh, how do we actually accomplish that? What's the difference? Here you can see the, the timeline from, from where we've been. As Dr. Nixon talked about, our truth in advertising problem in 2008 and where we're headed now. Um, with the TCAPS starting to change, we're already seeing the scores begin to increase with the first dip. Dr. Nixon speaks of the J-curve dip. We, we will have another dip as we implement those Common Core assessments because they're going to be very different because they're going to be largely open response, where the students will be engaging in those. So, the, the PARC consortium, um, is really affecting a large amount of students nationwide, nearly 63% of K-12 students nationwide. So, that's a really big deal. So, you've got the best minds in the nation who are taking a look at constructing a test that is significantly different than what we've seen before. So, we're, we're trying to have a true paradigm shift here to, to talk about how we prepare children for these tests, how we present the, the information. So, it's, it's not just a shiny new textbook and, and some new technology. We've got to do something different in terms of instruction. So, here you, you see the timeline for moving towards the full implementation of the PARC assessments. That does not happen until the 2014-15 school year, but we will be doing field tests in the coming year. And we will be looking at the TCAP tests, uh, field testing, some, some related items. And then our, our own constructive response test, we'll be ramping those up. The department will be implementing, uh, uh, more of those as we approach the 14-15 school year. So, here's what that looks like. So, as we get to 14-15, we'll be testing PARC and NAEP. So, NAEP will still be a separate measure then of, uh, of our state's achievement. Remember that NAEP is not a measure of individual student growth. You can't just adopt the NAEP test and say that this is how a particular student is performing because the student's only taking a cross-section of the standards, of the NAEP standards. And you piece all that together to get the, the larger mosaic, the larger puzzle for how the state is doing. So, we will see our TCAPS begin to ramp down, starting next year, removing SPIs from the Tennessee standards, from the Tennessee curriculum. So, you will see the TCAP begin to thin out so that we can support the implementation of Common Core standards in the classroom. You can't just say, teach that and teach this. We've got to take something off the table to give the teachers room to maneuver and give the students room to grow. So, the constructive response assessments will be ramping up then over the next two years in preparation to get us ready for, uh, the PARC assessments, which will have a great deal of open response questions. So, what really is the instructional shift? How, how does this, this happen? So, focus and coherence, those are pretty, pretty explanatory. But the, the term rigor gets thrown around a lot. What does that really mean to you when you think about rigor? Does it mean harder? Does it mean more? Does it mean faster? Does it mean thicker? Uh, much of the explanation of rigor in terms of Common Core standards have to do with the application of the learning. So, we're looking for students who, who not only can conceptualize and can, who've memorized their multiplication facts, they're fluent with recall in mathematics, multiplication facts, but they, they can actually apply that in a problem-solving setting. So, what does it mean to be a problem solver? How do we prepare children to be problem solvers? Is that, is that 100 homework problems versus 50? Is it doing more practice? Or, or is it presenting them with, uh, experiences where they have to do some thinking? They have to do some, some team planning. There has to be more than one way to, to approach the answer so that they pull all of that together. In ELA, the big idea is, is talking about rich content texts, uh, texts that are not just story-based, but are based in context of, of science, of social studies. So, we can teach the content of these other subject areas while we're teaching the reading. So, we're going to be seeing a, a very different way of, of teaching ELA standards through the rich texts that are informational texts, information-based. So, that, that's really going to stretch kids because they, they've been used to reading on-grade level material. And a lot of times informational texts are, are coded to a higher grade level. So, there are all sorts of ways in that you can get in and look at appropriate grade-level instruction while still using informational texts. And so, this is going to be a large shift for our classroom teachers to learn how to use these informational texts in lieu of the, the traditional storybooks that, that are primarily used in grades K-5 and, and other, um, even into middle school. Uh, we are already teaching Common Core in grades K-2. We implemented that last year. As we're moving into the coming school year, we're going to move into a partial math implementation for grades 3, 8, moving on through middle school. I'm going to show you what partial means on, on the next slide. Then, as we move into the 2013-14 school year, we'll have the resources in place and the trainings in place to help the teachers, uh, implement the ELA reading standards in those grade levels. And then the high school will follow suit as well. So, a partial implementation of math, these are our core focus standards in mathematics. So, there's basically two per grade level. So, the teachers are going to be asked to look at the two most important concepts, the ones that are going to give us the biggest conceptual understanding, the most bang-for-all buck. So, yes, they will still be teaching Tennessee standards next year because they will still be taking Tennessee TCAP tests that are aligned to those standards. But we're removing SPIs from those TCAP tests to give them space, room, and time to be able to begin implementing these core ideas in the new Common Core standards. So, it's a blended approach to, to the content. I hope that was, it's clear. Uh, now, this is something that's happening simultaneously as we implement mathematics. And I want to spend the, the. And I want to spend the rest of the time really talking about the mathematics implementation because that's where we're moving this fall with grades 3-8. And that's where the most growth needs to occur for the Park assessments. So the mathematical practices are the eight overarching ideas that are the so what that's involved in the classroom. So what do we really expect kids to know and be able to do after we've taught them multiplication facts, after we've taught them how to solve equations, after we've taught them how to work with data and statistics and numbers? What do we really expect them? What does it mean to be a problem solver? So these are the eight big ideas then that run concurrent through all of the curriculum, K-12, all the way through. So we want students then to build facility with this from year to year to year. So teachers can already be concentrating on how they're implementing these types of practices in their classroom. So these are the look fours that you should see in an everyday classroom when you come in and you do your walkabouts and particularly with your evaluation discussions. This summer, the department is launching a massive training in mathematics for grades three through eight. In particular, it's the focus to help with those core standards. There have been hundreds of trainers selected and identified. And there'll be, I think, thousands of teachers that will be trained this summer in multiple locations. The key part of the training this summer is it's also going to involve school teams with your administrators so that they're exposed to the standards and the process. And so they have a clear idea to help them then with the evaluation process and to know what changes to be looking for and to know what supports to be putting into the schools to help the teachers make this transition. Okay, what I would like to focus our attention on now, I think it's important for you as a board member to want to know, okay, we see all this, we hear all this, but what's it really going to feel like in my classroom? What's my third grader going to be doing differently this year? What's my fifth grader going to be doing differently? And how, what are they going to come home and say, mommy, daddy, this was a very different thing than last year? So I want to give you a chance to take a look at some of the performance-based tasks that will be on the Park assessments, tasks that I project the Park assessments will look like. So first, let's start down in kindergarten and first grade. Okay, so we talk about rigor. How do you put rigor in kindergarten and first grade? So this table is actually from the appendix of the Common Core standards themselves. I apologize for the size of it, but I want you to be able to see the scope. So we do a very good job of teaching the left column. So I'm going to start up there with that bunny problem. It says, "Two bunnies sat on the grass, three more bunnies hopped over there. How many bunnies are on the grass now?" We teach the heck out of that. Every child comes out of first grade and they can solve the bunny problem. But notice when we change the position of the unknown and we ask the same question a little bit differently. There's two bunnies sitting on the grass and some more hopped there, then there were five. So how many joined? That's where our kids start to draw a blank because this is no longer a two-plus-three question. This is a two-plus-what equals five question. And all of the adults that are involved in the education process, we make the assumption that somewhere along the line, kids can make that leap. We teach them the two-plus-three algorithm. They can make the leap to the fact family, two-plus-what equals five. And I said fact family, we memorize fact families. We stand up and we recite them in classrooms. But they still can't associate that to a real-world application. So just putting the bunnies on the grass helps the students to see, hey, this is a real scenario. This is a different problem. And so then, when we start with the unknown, there are some bunnies sitting on the grass and more hopped over there, then there were five bunnies, three more hopped over, then there were five. How many did we start with? So after completing a lifetime of education, all of you are sitting there saying, well, that doesn't look so rigorous. But when you change that unknown and you start with those different questions, that's very, very powerful and yet confusing for kids at the same time. And so we want to make sure that we're focusing our K-5 instruction on these multiple entry points here so that kids are able to translate and transition between where the unknown begins. So that's basic arithmetic. If you wanted to know what is numeracy, this is what numeracy is about. It's not just multiplying the fact that three times six is eighteen, but it's understanding the components and different ways to produce it. Okay, so what's that going to look like then as we move into third grade? What are these rich, performance-based assessments going to look like on this new Park assessment? So here's a nice, rich cookie problem. And we're not going to spend the time to actually work this, but you can see there's twenty-eight cookies. And you've got five children who are eating only one, two, they're eating three, one's eating five, the rest are eight, two. So the question is, how many kids ate two cookies? Now, the important part of this problem is in the last sentence there. Jane thinks this question can be solved by dividing twenty-eight by two. She's wrong. Can you explain why? So they're actually having to critique a different strategy. So not only do they have to think through the process and develop a strategy to approach solving the problem, but then they also need to critique why that strategy is not appropriate, why is it not working? So are we asking third graders here anything that's really different than what has historically been learned? We're talking about facts, we're talking about addition facts, we're talking about using multiplication, we're talking about division. But in the way it's presented, this is rich text problem solving. So this is the kind of thing that we will see now in these new assessments where they will have twelve to fifteen minutes to engage a problem like this and come up with a strategy. What's most important is that they document their strategy. They just can't put an unsupported answer that says, "I think it's six." That's not a full response. You have to tell, "Why do you think it's six? Can you justify your reasoning and your thinking?" So this is the newest, biggest challenge for our teachers is to get our kids to justify their reasoning. Now, I don't want to scare you, but I want to tell you what I am most worried about. These will be scored on a rubric. So the top score means you got the right answer, six, and you showed why. And if you didn't show why, then you don't get the top score. You get the next score down on the rubric. So this means that our best kids, our brightest kids, what do they tend to do? "I know the right answer. I did it in my head." And now they're going to get Bs. They're not going to get As, they're going to get Bs because they're not justifying how they did it in their head. So teaching Common Core standards is really focused at training our teachers and teaching our students how to justify their thinking so that those A kids can still get As. We know they can do it. We know they know why. Now explain why. Okay, I want to take you up to fifth grade. Let's get into middle school. Let's talk about the journey into middle school. What does it mean to leave elementary school and have a strong sense of numeracy? So let's take a look at fractions here. So this is a classic problem. This is the kind of problem that's been taught for years. So you see that there was a bowl of mangoes and the first person ate a sixth of them. The next person eats a fifth, the next eats a fourth, a third, and a half. And the question's, "How many are left?" And so then we ask students to develop a strategy for solving this problem. Many, I will say most, students will use a guess-and-check method. Let's just start with a number and then let's try to take away one-sixth of it, try to take away one-fifth of that, et cetera, et cetera. Or they'll do a work-backwards approach where, again, maybe we'll start with a number and then do the same thing in reverse. Both of those are good strategies, but they're guessing and checking strategies. And so if they exhaust their methods, where do they go next? What really is their strategic plan for problem solving? They don't necessarily have one because they may not really understand how these numbers go together. What is, I don't really have a strategy. I have a technique. I have a hammer, and the only thing I have in my pocket is a hammer. Everything looks like a nail, right? So that's how we typically historically instructed kids, is here's your hammer, and let me show you a bunch of nails. So true proficiency will look more like this. So first of all, let me increase the rigor. Now, this is the same problem that we just had up there. But I'm going to spin it around. We're going to increase the rigor because we're going to put different fractions. The others were just unit fractions. They all had ones in the top. We're going to use different fractions. And we're going to have people getting on and off of the bus. Now, notice I used the bus problem because we just don't put train problems on tests anymore. We've already learned our lesson from that. I thought the bus problem was still fair game. So here we go. Does this look like a tough problem? You have two fifths of the people getting off, three fifths of the original number getting on. Then you got another stop, you got more people getting off, more people getting on. Wow, this looks very, very confusing. What if I were to say to you that you can work this problem in ten seconds or less if you've been through Common Core standards and you've had a teacher that helps you understand problem solving? Incidentally, have any of you ever heard of Singapore mathematics? Have you ever wanted to know, "What the heck is Singapore mathematics?" I'm going to teach you what Singapore mathematics is in ten seconds. So it's about model drawing. So the most important thing to note in this problem is that first fraction says that two fifths of the people got off. So see that five in the bottom? That tells you the number of groups of people you had on the bus. Okay, so there they are. There's five groups of people on the bus. Now, we don't know how many are in those groups. It could be two people, it could be five people, it could be ten people. We just don't know yet, but that doesn't matter yet. What matters is, is two fifths of them got off, okay? So there they go. They're gone. So that lefts three groups on the bus. And then it says, "Three fifths of the original number got on." So we had five, so three fifths of five is three more. So now we have six groups of people. So we're going to roll up now to that next stop, and it said, "Half of those people get off." Are you catching on? Half of six of them is going to be three, so we'll have three groups left on the bus. I'm doing model drawing. And so then, one-third of the people left on the bus. See how that's different than the first time it said, it said, "Three fifths of the original number left." And this time, it just says, "One-third of this number left." Well, that's easy. I'll just take one and put it on there because one-third of three is one. So now I've got four groups on the bus. So I roll up to that last stop, and it says that three of those groups are getting off. And then there's the important thing, what's the group size? Leaving five people on the bus. So that means that circle has how many people in it? Five people. Therefore, there were twenty-five people on the first stop. Now, that took us really ten seconds or less to solve a very complex problem. That's called rigor. That's what Common Core standards is really all about, is how you can take a basic understanding of numeracy and be able to apply it in a situation and be able to understand your facts and your concepts. You have a conceptual understanding, but then you can also work through those processes. So just in case, I don't ever like to leave people hanging. So your mangoes problem, right? You had six groups of mangoes in the bowl, blah, 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 blah. Then there were three remaining, so three times six is eighteen. All that stuff in the middle was the blah, 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 blah. Sometimes we get so distracted in mathematics. What we needed to know here was the initial number of groups and the group size. That's our strategic plan. So teaching children to understand the mathematics in a way that they can develop strategic plans rather than just guessing and checking. There's nothing wrong with calculators. It's just we use them to only guess and check. When we use them strategically to problem-solve, that's a better thing. Now, Scott, how do we really do this? How do we produce middle schoolers who are capable of solving that bus problem? Deborah Ball is perhaps the leading researcher in the country right now that talks about specialized content knowledge. Specifically, what is it that young kids need to know? Elementary math teachers, what do they need to know to really be able to redirect student thinking? Because if you're multiplying or dividing fractions wrong, you're doing your facts wrong. I can't just come in and say, "Honey, that's wrong. Let me tell you, show you how to do it." I have to help you redirect your path of thinking back over to the right path. Otherwise, the next time you see a similar problem, you're going to go right back to the wrong path. So we have to redirect student thinking. That means we have to understand student thinking. We have to totally understand our content. So right here, we're talking about division by fractions, the dreaded F-word, fractions. Okay, this is really the gatekeeper. All those lovely kids that you just recognized, they probably likely have a good understanding of fractions. The ones that didn't get recognized tonight, this is probably one of the main reasons that was keeping them from being here and being part of that celebration because I just don't do fractions. Only in America do we have that math gene that says, "I don't do fractions." It's because of conceptual understanding. Division is about partitioning. So you stared at this for a couple of minutes, and I'll go ahead and let the cat out of the bag. Every one of those is a model for representing five-six divided by one-third. How many one-thirds are in five-six? So when I would teach this lesson, I would have my kids engaged in a discussion about these different models, which ones work, which ones don't work. They would talk amongst themselves. They would come up with a strategy. Then they would come up, they would use the document cameras at the front of the room, and they would present their discussions and their findings. Some kids are going to immediately say, "It's all of them. They all work." Other kids are going to say, "No, no, no. Only the one on the bottom right works because it's the only one that actually has two and a half because when you do the algorithm, you get two and a half." That's the only one that has the right answer. And so then the kids convince each other of which ones work. And the teacher's more of a facilitator of that understanding. So I will spend an entire lesson on how many problems? One, one problem. But I will teach for conceptual understanding. And the kids are involved in the discussion process. They have a hypothesis in the beginning. They explain that. I redirect their thinking, I correct misconceptions. And then as we wrap the lesson up, then we all have a clear understanding of what partitioning is. So this is how you teach fractions for depth and understanding. Now, what I want to say to you is that the majority of our elementary educators have never been exposed or expected to have this kind of thinking in their training. They themselves may not understand true partitioning or strategies for teaching fractions. So we need to make sure that we're focusing our professional development, particularly for elementary math teachers, so that they have the confidence and the comfort levels to be able to deliver true understanding of mathematics. We're not just talking about pencil and paper and using that standard algorithm. Now, not all of the test items are going to be these big, enormous investigative tasks. They can be short, constructive response. So here's a problem that a student would be expected to work in about two minutes. It would be a constructive response item. Notice the complexity here. It says, "Madison solved sixteen math problems in four minutes." How many did she solve in the highlighted section? How much time did it take her? So you've got two rates going on here. You've got a double line graph. You've got a rate on top of the line graph and a rate on the bottom of the line graph. So you've got to do some ratio and proportion style thinking. This is hitting in about seventh grade. But it's complex because it requires me to have a good understanding of division from fourth and fifth grade. And if I didn't have that strong foundation from the problem I just showed you, then I'm really going to struggle here to do the division because I've got two rates going on simultaneously. That's what makes this a complex seventh-grade problem. Okay, high school looks a little bit different. The standards, the Common Core standards in high school are threaded. There are seven main threads that run across the grade levels. They're not compartmentalized into courses like Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. So we will be revisiting our adopted Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II courses and likely to be making some changes to be more Common Core-aligned. So the department's going to be working with us at the board to make sure that we have a good alignment with our courses. Our EOCs, of course, will be going away as we implement the new Park assessment. So that's a lot of work to be done around that. Your high school folks are sort of in a hold tight and wait. They'll be seeing more professional development coming their way. Not this summer, but next summer as we move into that. Just a quick reminder, your rising juniors, your rising seniors this year, who are currently juniors, will be taking that new fourth-year math requirement for the first time. So lots of them probably be looking at that bridge course or that senior finite math course. I'm working with the department to provide some training and support on that on the Electronic Learning Center over the summer so that we can give some teachers some tools to be able to implement that as well. So here's some resources from the department. Just some information about, if you have questions about the tencore and the tencore website, again, I wanted to make sure that you have that highlighted. Does anybody have any questions for me before I turn the floor over? Yes, sir.
When the Tennessee Diploma Project was implemented, there were some training issues across the state, or seemed to be training issues across the state. Are we going to be better prepared in training these teachers to teach our other teachers for this critical thinking pathway?
My first response to that is that it's a very different approach this summer. We were working on a train-the-trainer approach previously with a more limited budget. So we were training key teachers to go back and spread that throughout the schools. Now, with the First to the Top Grant money in full swing and readily available, they're training more of a mass of teachers that will be attending. So they're getting direct training now from the state trainers. There's an army of state trainers that have been trained. They got together about a month ago and met for an entire weekend and got trained to be trainers this summer. So I think we will see a very different approach because we have more resources and there's many more hearts and eyes and minds involved in the training. Good question.
For students that may have more of a, uh, a drill-and-kill type of mentality, flashcards and such, and that's been their mathematic proficiency.
Mm-hmm.
How dramatic is this gonna be to go to a more conceptual learning style and what are we gonna do to, to kind of buffer that to where we don't fall back on old habits of, well, let's get the flashcards out?
Exactly. Now, let me, let me try to be as clear as I can on this. There's nothing wrong with, with that style developing fluency, okay? What we're talking about though is adding conceptual understanding to it. So, a simple question I would ask you, if you could think to yourself, self, what's eleven times twelve? Okay, you got that? Cause, cause you've got a diploma, probably have a college degree, and the world stops at twelve times twelve, so you know that. But if I were to ask you, what's thirteen times fourteen? We can hear the crickets chirping, right? Nobody in the room knows what thirteen times fourteen is because the multiplication table stopped at twelve times twelve. So, what's the approach? How do we get a strategy for going there? So, what, what we're saying is, is that we've been teaching memorization of facts, even in algebra. We teach kids about equations and lines, but all of that, we have a whole other course called Geometry, and they don't understand the connection. And then you get to calculus and calculus teachers are always reteaching algebra because there, there's no connection. So, we're talking about teaching for that conceptual understanding. It, it's less, less is more. So, we've, we've thinned out the number of standards so that you can go deeper with the quality of thought. So, you're starting with what is, was truly core. That's why it's called Common Core, and you can get down deeper. So, we're not saying that having quick recall and fluency with your facts is not important. It is important, but in addition, having that conceptual understanding. The kids find a different path there. Some kids need that, that quick memorization in order to open the door to the conceptual understanding. Other students are saying, I see no relevancy in the memorization. You've got to show me the conceptual understanding. So, the teacher's approach now has to be more spiral through, through the teaching of the curriculum so that kids have multiple entry points. See, that's the big deal is we're not just teaching fractions this week and Monday is a new topic. See, that's the way it typically has been in our, in our textbook materials. We start chapter three on Monday. So, now you don't do anything in chapter two anymore because, because we're on chapter three. So, we're talking about standards that are going to drive the instruction rather than, than a linear textbook where you teach something in a sequential order.
And the training is directed in both ways, that if you are a regimented, uh, recall learner, or if you're a conceptual learner, there's a path in the training to get you, get you back to that, that?
Yes, there's, there's a path in the training to help teachers understand how to redirect that student thinking that I was thinking about. The, the focus though is much more on the conceptual learning because, because we've been teaching the, the recall memorization approach. We're pretty good at that. That's why we had such high TCAP scores, uh, eons ago and such high proficiency rates because we would say, this is exactly what's on the test. This is exactly how you work the problem. And then you go to the NAP and the ACT and they change the problem. So, that's what we're trying to do now is the conceptual approach. Excellent question. You guys are paying attention.
So, on the assessments, they're, they're no longer bubbling, they're all going to be?
Yes, yes, they will be. There'll be a mixture of multiple choice and open response. Um, the, the open response will be more the mid-year and three-quarter year. The final assessment of the year will be multiple choice for a quick turnaround.
Not quick enough this year, but, uh, apparently, or we're not sure about that. Let me ask one more question on the assessment. Will this affect value-added or ability to have value-added scores?
It will not affect our ability to have value added. We have some, some very bright people at the department who are able to make those calculations. Uh, Dr. Suhvi Park is the person who really heads that up. If you've ever had a conversation with him, you'll just feel smarter from being in the room with him. So, he, he's assured us that he'll be able to make those calculations and those transitions. What, what it will affect, of course, there'll be a change in, in your standard setting in the baselines and we'll be, we'll be along for the ride on that as, as those assessments are administered.
But even if there's a J, if there, there's a J curve that is an initial dip?
What I was saying about that is, is because we have not historically tested open response items. But that's why the department, they began field testing those, uh, two years ago and, and it was pretty scary because eighty-five percent of the seventh grade papers came back blank after the first initial response, but got better last year. It's gonna be better next year and better the next year. So, as we're training our kids to, to engage these open response items more and more, we should see an easier transition. But I don't wanna fool you on that because we have been historically a multiple choice state. We have a long, well, a harder path to, we have more growth to change our behaviors because the answer's no longer on the page. We can't just teach good test-taking skills. We've got to teach problem solving.
Wayne?
Excuse me. I think, uh, I don't know that I've run into anybody that, uh, is not happy about Common Core with the depth of learning rather than the breadth of it, but I don't know that you mentioned that there's two entities out here. So, Common Core isn't actually Common Core because you have one group developing an assessment tool and then another group. So, as far as Tennessee comparing to Idaho or Tennessee comparing to Maine, we're not really gonna get to do that because there's actually two entities out there with different assessments. Is that correct?
Uh, it, it, it is somewhat correct in the fact that there are two different assessments and those assessments may have a different flavor and an approach, much like the ACT is a different type of test than NAP, which is a different type of test than, than our state assessment. State assessments are holding kids accountable for, we gave you the full spectrum of what you're supposed to know and you know this much. Whereas the NAP says we're gonna give you this little bitty piece and then we're gonna put all the pieces together to see how well the community is doing. And then the ACT is more about, um, sorting. So, it's about saying, this is how, uh, these are, these are the content standards you know, but this is how you know it in relation to your peers. So, the, the normal curve is still used in those calculations. So, um, what is the same though is the core standards. So, the standards are the same, but the test writers will, will create assessments with perhaps a different philosophy or approach or blueprint between, between the two vendors. Uh, the, the good thing is, is that, uh, the park assessment is the majority. We have, I, I think it's twenty-six states during the park assessment, whereas the other one's about half that. Good question, though.
Thank you.
It's a distinction between how we test and what we teach.
Other questions?
I think you all know where to find me if you have more. My phone, my email's always available. Uh, you can always get, get in touch through Dr. Nixon and I'll be happy, I'll be happy to come back if you have any.
Well, we really appreciate that presentation. There's a lot there to digest. I think we got some teachers here tonight who are eager to get, uh, some more information. So, uh, but Dr. Nixon, uh, Dr. Ennis, thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we didn't have any visitors tonight. That takes us back up to number seven.
Mr. Gill read these to us last night. I don't see a need, particularly since he's not here, to ask him to read them again. Uh, are you comfortable? Someone wanted to make a motion to approve all of those at once. I think that would be good.
No problem.
So moved.
Second.
So, the motion's to approve seven A through F. Any questions on those? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. We did eight, nine, and ten. Takes us to eleven.
Eleven, local consolidated application for federal funding. Under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, the local consolidated grant application for fiscal year two thousand thirteen point zero one includes the following components. Title I, Part A, improving the academic achievement for disadvantage. Title II, Part A, teacher and principal training and recruitment. Title III, Part A, English language acquisition, language enhancement and academic achievement. Recommend that you approve fiscal year two thousand thirteen point zero one, local consolidated grant applications under ESEA and authorize a directed file and necessary budget revisions, addenda, and tran- or transfer request.
Further recommendation?
So moved.
Any discussion? We had some discussion this last night. I guess that's why Ms. Wise didn't come back tonight. She didn't, didn't want a repeat performance. But Ms. Bell's here in case we wanna pick on somebody. On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Twelve.
Riverdale High School Green Roof Project. Mr. Tom Nolan has requested permission to construct a green roof project at Riverdale High School. Project will be installed on the top of the covered walkway extending from D-Hall towards the annex close, close to the parking. Drainage subdrain, root barrier, filter fabric, water retention fabric, soil and plants will be installed. The installation cost is ten thousand eight hundred dollars and will be donated by Landscape Support Services. A three hundred dollar grant will be used for metal roof edging. Plants will be donated by the Riverdale High School Agriculture Department. Riverdale High School Faid, Friends Against the Destruction of the Environment Chapter will maintain the green roof. There will be no cost to the Ruff County Board and we recommend that you approve the structure of the green roof project. Riverdale High School as presented, no cost to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I thought it was notable in the explanation we were given that student Amy Watson, uh, had pursued this for a number of years and, uh, I wanna applaud her, uh, initiative and, uh, and resolve to just see this to a, a place as she's a, a senior now.
Thank you. Other discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Thirteen.
Name a Riverdale High School band room pursuant to policy three point two one zero. The director may make recommendation to the board for naming a portion of a school campus. Mr. Tom Nolan, on behalf of the Riverdale High School Band and Riverdale High School Band Boosters, submitted a request to rename the Riverdale High School Band Room the Ronald S. Meers Band Hall. Mr. Meers forty-three-year teaching career, thirty years at Riverdale High School, has been a driving force in music and education, not only at Riverdale High School, but across the state and region. He is actively involved, he has been actively involved in professional associations for the advancement of his students in the profession of teaching music. Recommend that we rename the Riverdale High School Band Room the Ronald S. Meers Band Hall.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Brief comment. I, I had the opportunity to go to the reception at the Band Boosters held for Mr. Meers, uh, Sunday, week ago, I guess it was. And it was very well attended and it was very clear that, uh, his work has been very much appreciated at Riverdale. So, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board.
Thank you, Tim. Other discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Fourteen.
Approval of non-renewal for non-tenured teachers. The board must authorize the director of schools' recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenured teachers at the conclusion of the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year. And we recommend that you authorize the director of schools' recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenured teachers at the conclusion of two thousand eleven, two twelve, two thousand twelve school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Fifteen, we discussed last night.
Yeah, we agree.
Unless there's any questions. Hearing none, let's move on to, uh, sixteen.
Dismissal of tenured teacher. The board has been provided with a memorandum containing charges against Richard Kimberley, who is a tenured teacher with the board. Mr. Kimberley has been suspended without pay pending board action. The board sustains these charges. Mr. Kimberley will be presented with a copy of the charges and a statement of his rights under Tennessee law. Recommend that you sustain the charges against Richard Kimberley as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. General discussion, we had our, our, uh, examination of the director's evaluation last night, of course. Any other topics?
Just the celebration that was out in the lobby with all the Duke students, uh, Duke, uh, contests.
Right.
That, uh, that was close to a celebration of academic success, I think I've, I've heard. So, that was, that was great to hear. Great to see so, so many children.
Yeah, appreciate them showing up and their parents bringing them.
I wanna recognize the Browns Chapel kindergarten teachers, right? All right, good job. Appreciate you.
One say no.
Being here and, and, uh, speaks volumes for your dedication and also you're in search of knowledge, one of you said, right? How you feel about these Common Core? Huh? You okay?
Mixed reaction, I would say. Talk to us after, after the meeting. Terry, you had a comment.
I just, I just gonna like a general comment. Uh, uh, congratulate Ms. Barnes and her staff on the job there.
Oh, yeah.
Past, uh, Saturday down at Laverne and, uh,
Nice job.
They had a crowd. It, uh, reminded me of, uh, it reminds me of one of those Christmas sale ads when they line up the front door. And if you're not, you're not on your toes, you fix to get run over.
But nobody was trampled to death.
No, no, I ain't seen that. But it's very well done.
About, about eight hundred is close.
Wow.
That's pretty incredible.
Yeah, that's a, that's a testament to our district. They, they wanna work here. Thank you, Terry.
Sure may.
Talking about trainers. He said trainers this summer. Um, teachers could volunteer to train. And we went to a meeting recently and said, could Ruff County add some more? So, you've already had more teachers volunteer as trainers in middle Tennessee than any other district.
All right.
Um, so we turned around. We got a number of administrators that are volunteering to do it. We have three to eight, three through eight math training in Common Core this summer. All of our schools are sending teams that include the administrators that's involved in that. In our training session, we volunteered to host one. It'll be at Blackman Middle School in July.
Thank you. Other discussion?
Not sure why we, uh, got chocolate bars from Thurman Francis Arts Academy, but, uh, they're sure appreciated. And, uh, I got to enjoy their spring, uh, Strings Concert, uh, this past week. And, uh, that was, uh, very enjoyable as well. The students did a wonderful job, uh, in the, uh, in the Strings Program. So, Dr. Hilton, to be commended.
All right, thank you, Aaron.
And could we have a conversation with MTSU about air conditioning at Murphy because, uh,
The graduations are upon us.
It's, uh, it's been warm in there a few times. So, hopefully they can get it, turn it down.
You are welcome to have that conversation. Good luck to you. Other discussion? I can tell you, the MTSU graduation while you were there, got a trifle warm, uh, also.
Get three and a half hours later.
No more discussion? Then we are adjourned.